No, I didn't recognize.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Pecoson City Council for Monday, February the 11th. If we could all rise, Councilman Vernal is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing and guidance as we gather here this evening. Keep us ever mindful of the responsibility and trust that has been placed on us by our fellow citizens, and help us always to serve our community and residents to the best of our ability. We ask that you grant our state and national leaders the wisdom and cooperative spirit to address and resolve the many issues before them, and especially in a manner that will ensure the security and quality of life we enjoy in our country. We pray for all who care and protect for us around the world, especially those who are in harm's way, and we ask for comfort for their families who are apart from them during the time of their service. We ask for your special blessing and comfort for the family here in Pecoson that lost their home and possessions to fire this weekend. Grant them the heart and resolve to recover from this tragedy, and help them to know that our thoughts and prayers are with them in this difficult time. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There are special presentations or work sessions to follow up on this evening, so we'll move straight to the audience for visitors. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on any issue, now is that time, and I'll offer you the podium at this time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council that we move forward to the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session, January 28, 2013.
Second.
A motion made and seconded that we approve the minutes of the regular session for January 28. Any questions or comments to those? Not Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Eyre.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and the work session?
I move that we approve the minutes for the work session of January 28, 2013.
Second.
A motion made and seconded that we approve those also. Seeing no comments, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Eyre.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, the first item being an ordinance, which we heard last time, amending the subdivision site plan and zoning ordinances to require depiction of RPAs, notations referencing maintenance of, and permitted uses of those and within the 100-foot RPA buffer areas. And this is a second reading. Randy, do you want the staff to give another presentation?
Only if council members have questions.
Any questions, or is somebody prepared to make a motion to move this forward?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the subdivision ordinance by revising Article 8, Section 8-3 pertaining to final plat requirements, and adopt an ordinance amending the site plan ordinance by revising Article 2, Section 2-02 pertaining to preliminary site plan requirements, and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 11.4 Environmental Management, EMA overlay district pertaining to submission requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve all of those ordinances as one. Any further discussion on this from council?
Councilman Eyre.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item under unfinished business is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by defining and allowing sheds on vacant lots, and this is also a second reading. And is somebody prepared to make a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 1, General Provisions, Section 1-3, and Article 5, RS District Regulations, Section 5-2.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve that ordinance also. Is any further discussion on that by council?
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions. I was not here at the first reading, so I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, and I believe some of these topics were raised, and I wanted to make sure that I understand. Painted metal under, where is it, under the B2, a storage yard? It's section two. I'm looking at both at a memos from a work session note. Is that in the?
Yes.
In the, I apologize. I think, is this, is this the one? I'm having trouble finding right now where we talked about no outdoor activity can be conducted between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM?
That's a storage, that's a storage yard. We had to come to a shed.
Okay, so that's not what we're talking about with the sheds?
No, this is sheds.
All right, thanks.
This is accessory sheds that can be kept on a vacant lot.
Okay.
They're limited in size so that you could keep a lawnmower or something. There's requirements not to have.
And the water could only be connected.
Right, you can have the water there, but you can't have.
All right. I knew I had a question for the other one then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to make a comment. I guess this is to amend the existing rules, and the existing rules are most of this paper?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I was wondering if it took us, whatever that is, 15 pages to put an accessory building out, then maybe that was something that's generally wrong with government.
Okay. Well, now we can.
Never mind.
You'll find the new areas highlighted and are underlined, and there are very few those. It only took 12.
Only took 12, okay.
All right. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Eyre.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item under unfinished business, and the last one, is a resolution making an appointment to the Library Advisory Board. Somebody prepared to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Library Advisory Board with the following names inserted. Terry Johnson, his term will expire January 31, 2016, and Cecilia Sis Ambrose, whose term will expire January 31, 2014.
Second.
A motion made and seconded that we approve this resolution with the names of Terry Johnson and Sis Ambrose inserted for the Library Advisory Board. Further comments? Not Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Eyre.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and now under new business, we have a resolution making nominations to, for the appointment of the Board of Equalization. Is anybody prepared to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making nominations for appointment to the Board of Equalization for the city of Pecoson with the names inserted of James D. Rocky, E. Gene Effer, Jr., Henry L. Freeman, W. Dennis Ankeny, and Casey D. Stratton.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we move forward with our appointments to the Board of Equalization. I believe that's a repeat board from, and everybody did a phenomenal job last time, so.
There's just one new one, with the mayor, Henry Freeman.
Henry Freeman, okay. I think he's served before on that, though.
Yeah.
Okay. With that said, any further questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Eyre.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
And the next item under new business is an ordinance regarding applications to the Board of Equalization and the disposition of such applications. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this essentially sets the stage for the process that we'll be embarking on, actually, the beginning parts of it have been going on for months. But once the preliminary assessments are done, there's a process by which citizens that have questions or would like to appeal their assessment have, with an administrator, opportunity with the assessor, and also through the Board of Equalization, as the first of two appeal layers that they have, which are not mutually exclusive. Mr. Faison is here, if you have questions for him, but this is, this is pretty standard schedule for us in a reassessment.
I think the only thing I'd like to just make public is that it is reassessment year. I think everybody knows that. That's why we are doing the Board of Equalization appointments, so that if you're not in agreement with the city assessor, that you have an avenue to appeal. There's some key dates in this ordinance that I think we ought to highlight. The first is that applications for relief from the assessor must be received in the city by July 3, 2013, to be considered. And again, I think what Randy's talked about here is that that would start the process with the assessor, once that started. And then that the Board of Equalization, all the way from the process through the city assessor and his hearing, and the Board of Equalization, must be completed by August 23rd. So those are the key dates. Am I correct?
The modification, folks will have the, they should be seeing their notices about the middle of April, and in the next month, if they have opportunities to meet with the assessor, they don't have to wait until July to meet with the assessor. You can, as soon as you get your assessment, if you have questions about it or concerns about it, a buddy will make himself available to meet with you. But the real period for hearings with the assessor is May, but questions can come the day you get it, if you have a concern, and then you're right with the end date. Applications to go to the Board of Equalization need to be received by mid-June, sorry, mid-July, to be concluded by, completed by the 20th of August, I think it is. And as I said, that's, there are three ways to appeal an assessment. One is administratively with the assessor. One is with the Board of Equalization, and one is with the circuit court. You can, as a taxpayer, as a property owner, you can choose any one or any combination of the three, and folks have the ability to appeal their assessment and value both up or down. And we've seen both.
One question, Jean. What was the July 3 date? What was that?
I'm seeing the July 3 date in the one that I've got, that that is, applications for relief shall be received in the city. In other words, and Randy's exactly right, and I should have mentioned that, that you can often, you can oftentimes just come in and talk to the assessor. If you want a formal hearing to the Board of Equalization, you need to have that application in by July 3.
Very good, thank you. July 3, okay.
So those are some key.
Are these steps progressive, or can the peeler select any plate, any one of the three?
The person that would like to appeal their assessment can choose any of, any or all. The only, they're not progressive, excuse me, and if you miss the first one, you're precluded from the other two. The only thing that really comes into play is the calendar. Once the assessor's period is over, that one's finished.
Yeah.
And then the Board of Equalization is finished, and then the circuit court remains the only one, but.
But a taxpayer doesn't have to start off with the assessor, then go to the board?
That's correct.
That was clarification.
Can choose any or, any combination of the three.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further?
I think it's probably also important to let everybody know that you may get your reassessment lowered this year, but then, am I right, it automatically goes back to what it was the next year. You would, in other words, if you wanted to keep it at that level, you would have to appeal every year.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah. No, just because.
It doesn't have anything to do with next reassessment.
Right. The Board of Equalization could lower it and agree with them, but then the very next year, it automatically goes back to what you assessed it at, and they'd have to appeal it again.
Unless I feel that the board was correct, and I was wrong, then.
Right. Hey Buddy, if you don't mind, can you come up to the podium?
Yeah, anybody can appeal at any time, and if the board changes my assessment, I'm obligated to leave that assessment where they have put it for the remainder of that assessment cycle. The next reassessment cycle, I can turn it around if I disagreed with what the Board of Equalization did, and I could change the assessment back away. I say.
Right.
I'm not bound by their decisions, no more than they're bound by mine, except for that cycle.
Right. But if you agree.
Yes, that'd be crazy to.
Then, then you would also reset their, their assessment, and that would be the future.
That's correct.
And those are all requirements of state law, so.
That's correct.
And I want to make sure that everybody understands that that is a state law requirement.
Yeah, this whole process is a state process, and it's laid out in state taxation law. It really has nothing to do with the city per se.
As far as the assessment process.
As far as how it's done.
That's correct. Okay.
Can I clarify that all of these dates are listed both on the original assessment that the homeowner receives?
Yes, the notices that will be mailed out in the middle of April will have the dates for my hearings, as well as the application, because there is an application also for that hearing, and it's just basically, so I know a little bit before I contact the person what the issue is, okay? That is laid out in the notice, as well as the date of July 3, which is the last date that they have to have the application in to go to the Board of Equalization. And that, again, is just an application that basically lays out the general case of the person that's going to be pursuing, so they have a little bit of knowledge before the person gets there. Because you're only limited to about 15 minutes per parcel, which sounds like a lot to you get there, and it goes pretty quick, so they want to know as well as themselves kind of what, you know, what they're coming in for.
And we'll do a good job of publicizing this as well, on the website and.
Right.
Yes, I'll be getting with the webmaster, and we're going to be putting out quite a bit of information on the website about it as well, as well as the application forms and everything to be developed.
Any other questions, Buddy? You'll have to, you can ask us right after the meeting, and you can have Buddy one-on-one. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance of the city of Pecoson, Virginia regarding applications to the Board of Equalization and the disposition of such applications.
Second.
A motion made and seconded that we approve the ordinance providing for the Board of Equalization. Any further questions or comments? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Eyre.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, last item under new business is a discussion on Ren's Road over.
Randy? Mr. Mayor, members of council, you recall, this is a project that we have been working on for some time. In September of last year, you authorized our application on your behalf of a grant application with the state of Virginia, cost share, to assist us in rebuilding the ramp and associated pier at the end of Ren's Road, which is a, which is a very much inadequate public facility. If you've been there, you know exactly what I'm talking about, and it's very difficult for people to get their boats in and out. If you got the wrong tide, it's absolutely impossible. Also, the ramp is short, and the grade of the ramp is not particularly good, nor is the width of the condition of pier. At that time, we were hopeful that if we met all of the requirements of the state grant program, that project, well, we estimated that project would cost just slightly less than $250,000. We were hopeful if we met all the requirements that we might be eligible for up to $185,000 in state money, which would have meant that our cost, based on that estimate, those two estimates, was about $62,000. Certainly, there was uncertainty as to the grants application, and shortly thereafter, we became aware through Councilman Green of the possibility of working this project as outside of the DGF process. There are requirements that you have to meet for the grant that you wouldn't necessarily have to meet for a boat ramp or for a pier, both in its construction, its parking requirements, and also its future in terms of access and potentially the ability to charge someday, which we're not contemplating, but the point is, our future would be much more in our hands. And so, based on an informal quote that we had received, we had at least reason to believe that we may be able to get the project in at less cost if we went without the state requirements. So, following direction from you, we issued an RFP, and I'd like to point out that all of the persons that worked on that RFP are here. Dave, and Tom, and Ellen, and Ken, and Teresa. All but Teresa were the selection committee, and Teresa was the chairman officer. And to, to get it down to the, the long and short of it, the proposal that we received originally was to go it alone, using the foundation of the existing ramp as the, as the foundation on which to reconstruct, so repair in place with a new pier. We also, anticipating, you might ask us at a later date, well, what would it have cost to simply replace the whole thing? We asked for that as an alternative to the bid, so that we would know the answer to that question. The cost to the city for those two with a repair in place is recommended, if you chose that option, at just slightly less than $141,000. The cost for removal and repair new is slightly less than $150,000. In both instances, they are turnkey jobs. The permitting, everything associated with it is the responsibility of the contractor. So where it stands, and I'm sorry, one additional fact, around the first of the year, we were notified by the state that, based on our site constraints, the maximum amount of award that they would consider for us was $50,000. So that's $50,000 against a project that at least has an estimated cost of almost $250,000, or going, if we decide, if you decide to go, going without the state requirements, you can actually bring the project in for about $50,000 less and not be beholden to anyone in terms of the, of the future, the parking requirements and other things. Should you decide to move forward, the money that could be made available for this project is an amount of money that we have had in the capital projects fund balance since prior to my arrival, and it has largely remained intact. We did use a small amount of it in November, and for what, I'm slipping my, my memory, but essentially, you have $227,000 in unallegated capital projects fund balance, which is one-time money, which has been sitting there as the local match for the next phase of South Larson Park. The next phase of South Larson Park has been in flux since before I got here. In the meantime, we have a, a fully functional park. Certainly, it could be improved, but in terms of a basic facility, it is, it is more inadequate. I say that as a soccer coach that spends a lot of time down there. The noted deficiency is bathrooms, and this grant is not that. So if you chose to, that is monies that you could use for this project. So essentially, you have three choices in front of you, and one of them has an A and a B. The first choice is to decide that you just don't want to do this project in any variation. Second is to proceed with this alternative, where we proceed without the state at a lower cost, and in that instance, the A and the B is, do we proceed with the removal and build in place? And I would tell you that all, all of the respondents to the RFP suggested that that would be the way to go. One of them, in fact, didn't even bid the, the build on top of the existing ramp option. And then the last is, which is not one that I would recommend, but certainly within your purview, is to say, no, we're still interested in going with the state project, and what we would need to do then is bid that project based on all the state requirements, get that cost, and potentially apply that $50,000 to it. Logic tells me that that is likely going to be at least as expensive, if not more expensive, and will take several months to get through the process. But those are the options, as I see it, and we, we're here to answer your questions, and we wait for your direction.
Lot of interest in having a boat ramp on that side of town.
Yes, there is. Right. Well, I think.
We've got a business down there that's moving forward with a lot of new things, and this will just add to it.
If we vote to move forward, what's the timetable to turnkey it?
Teresa's prepared with the answer to that question, sir. We went over a list of all the possible questions we thought you would have, and she came prepared.
That's your boat ramp book?
Okay.
If they had started in the middle of January, they're estimating about 44 days for permitting, 36.5 days for construction, and expect to be done sometime in the middle of June.
Now, we're talking July, if you move that.
Yeah, we're talking July. This is all potential non-permitting, which they have no control over.
Did I hear you say, Teresa, 36 days once the permit is in hand? Is that what you said?
36 and a half.
36 and a half days.
Do we anticipate any permitting problems, or can we speculate?
We don't anticipate any, but some of those permits are not ours.
Well, I know.
We don't anticipate any.
Carrie, I talked to one of the contractors, not the successful one, but he felt like that the permit was going to be a breeze, because it's, it's an existing ramp that's there, it's not rocket science, we're not proposing anything new, and he felt like the permitting would go quickly.
You've got to deal with a federal agency, a state agency.
Yeah.
So. One of the advantages of the approach that we have for your consideration tonight is it's turnkey. All the responsibility for the entire thing is on the contractor, as opposed to some sort of standard thing, where somebody designs it, somebody permits it, somebody builds it. One construction company has all of the responsibility.
Is there any need to have any sort of contingency funding available in the event they run into some unforeseen problem?
I would say no, because we bid it as a turnkey project. If you choose the, if you choose the option to, to build a new one in place, I think that they got to, they're going to have to stick on that number. There is a caveat, which is indicated in the staff report. If you chose the option to build on top of the existing structure, then they've got a caveat that says if that structure breaks or becomes structurally unsound, it's going to need to be replaced. So strangely, the number is almost exactly the same, or maybe even exactly the same. Either way, so.
Still, with the timeline, I mean, if we, if we move to the resolution and council feels like they want to set aside $5,000 or something that you can use, five or $10,000, just in case something comes up that's unforeseen, so we don't have to come back to council to appropriate money. We don't have, that doesn't mean we're going to spend it, it just means that we've authorized you to, to deal in that. So that's, that's certainly something council can consider as they make their motions. All right, so I'm kind of reading a consensus, I know we've had this discussion many times in the past. I think it's clear that we want to do something with access on the Bennett Creek and Pecoson Riverside of the, of the city, similar to what we've done at Messick Point and Back Riverside of the community. And I think it's clear that we don't want to go with the state. In fact, we're. In fact, when we kind of pulled that string, it was an unworkable project, uh, as I recall, because we kind of pulled that string before. So I'm kind of seeing that, uh, we're at option B as a council, and is, does anybody want to move forward tonight? If so, then make a motion, and let's move this thing forward.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2012, 13, and should we, is this where we change the amount to add $5,000?
I think it's in the, I think it's in the resolution where, uh, well, you're right.
The dollar amounts in both of them.
Dollar amounts in both.
Why don't you adopt the resolution authorizing the award of the contract, switch it, and then whatever figure you come up with, and we can put it into your ordinance, and you adopt the ordinance appropriating funds second.
Do the resolution first?
Yes.
All right, what? Don't change the dollar amount. All right, wait one second. Well, okay. I'm, I'm good with that. What?
In section 1, it says not to exceed the number of signatures, but it probably doesn't change the number of signatures.
Okay.
If it's down, look.
Uh, well, I understand. We just don't want to slow down the process to get the ramp in a usable form this year, because of something unforeseen.
I didn't see that either.
All right. So...
Not to exceed.
All right, then I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Crofton Construction Services, Inc., for the replacement of the Ren's Road boat ramp and its courtesy pier, and change the amount to 154,984.
Second.
With amendments.
Motion made in second. Further comments?
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, removal of the exi- the old sunken boat, is that included in the, um, this price? Is it included? Okay.
That is a big bonus.
It's a, it's a big boat.
Yeah, it is. Okay. But, uh, good question, very good question, because that's been kind of a thorn in our side for many, many years. All right, uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Ah.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, the ordinance?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2012 and 13, changing the figures to 154,984.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made in the second that we approve the ordinance making the actual appropriation for that, uh, boat ramp. Questions or comments?
We do have the contract for the 149, just five is just for the city manager in case.
Right.
Okay. As long as that's clear to everybody. No intention of suspending.
Right. Okay. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. And that's it for the agenda, so comments on the city manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I only have, uh, one thing. Uh, councilmembers at your place, um, are two items of, of particular note, want to draw your attention to. Uh, one is, uh, a very recent press release from the governor's office with regard to, um, his recent legislated, legislation introduced on the subject of school and campus security. It was something that you've talked about, and you were, um, desirous of tracking, sort of how that went through the General Assembly. Well, this is, this is, this is from last week, represents the governor's thinking, uh, following the completion of the task force that he appointed, so I point that out for your, for your read. Also, at your place, um, in recent conversation with the mayor, uh, he has, uh, been able to forward on to us some questions, thoughts, musings that councilmembers have with regard to, uh, budget questions. You know, we did some of those questions coming out of the retreat. This is sort of a new set of questions, um, and, uh, the answers are here for you, and we would encourage you to ask us, um, really, any question that we can staff for you. Be mindful of the fact that we're going to staff anything you ask, but please try not to kill us, uh, in terms of, of requests, but please don't let that discourage you from any request, because the questions that you're asking are important, they're, sometimes they're very complex, and that's because the easy answers were dispensed with years ago. So thank you for your questions, and we'll be available, uh, by phone if you have specific questions about what we've done, and, um, and we welcome your continued questions. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you for that, Randy. All right. Councilman Southall.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Okay. Eric?
Um, I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that the CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, um, is conducting another training course that's scheduled to begin, um, Tuesday, March the 5th, and we are looking for people, residents of Picocion, 18 years or older, who are interested in receiving this training. Um, it lasts a total of seven weeks, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM at the fire station, number one. And it is a way for people to be better prepared for emergencies, where they can help their families, their neighborhood, and the city, should a disaster happen. Because in times like those, often, the professional fire and medical first responders aren't immediately available. So, that is all.
Mr. Mayor Freeman.
Only thing that I have is just a very, very general comment, that I'm just continually amazed at what the city gets to accomplish with what, uh, we have to do it with, from, well, just anything you can, uh, bring up. It's just, it's just a great place to live. That's all.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilman Vernal?
Uh, just one quick comment, uh, a week, uh, not this past Saturday, but before I had occasion to use the drop-off. It had to be the coldest day of the year, the wind was howling, there was a lot of people there, the, uh, the staff that was working were very efficient, uh, very helpful, I might almost say cheerful, today, it was just amazing that they, they functioned in that weather as long as they did, with all of the traffic that was going in there. So just, just another accolade for that project and, and the people that run it.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Green?
Just one quick thing, I can't take all the credit for the alternative idea for this boat ramp, because Bob speechly planted the seed in my brain many, many months ago